American Gods and.
Yeah, I've read a bunch of stuff.
Have you watched The Sandman on Netflix?
No. Really?
Yeah.
Mine.
Really?
Yeah. Oh, Sandman, Sandman.
Okay, yeah.
So good.
He's drying out tonight. Just looking to see when they are.
Everybody ready? All right, I'm gonna call to order the Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022 Town Council Regular Meeting. It is 7:00 PM. Welcome, everyone. Roll call.
Here, Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Sade.
Here.
Mr. Beckerman.
President.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
We have the minutes of the council meeting from August 9th, 2022. Do we have any changes, corrections, additions, deletions? No? Minutes stand as presented. Agenda, Rick. Any changes?
No changes.
Communications to council. These are non-agenda items only. Three-minute time limit. See if you have something that's not on the agenda. So if you're here for STRs, don't stand up at this point. And you can stand at the mic. If we want. Yeah, please.
This is not STR.
Yeah, this is not. This is just, this is just general whatever.
It's a pleasant surprise.
So hi, my name's Terry Warren. I'm resident of Breckenridge and not here to talk about STRs, although I understand it's a it's a hot topic and it's important to a lot of people for different reasons. But I'm here because I'm the current president of the Summit County Garden Club. And for the past 15 years, maybe more, we've maintained the town-owned Breckenridge Alpine Garden. Past couple of years, especially one of the berms became so overgrown with yarrow, clover, and other invasive plants that it made it nearly impossible to weed, let alone add new plants. Thanks to the town of Breckenridge, Streets and Park staff. Over a two-day period this summer, we were able to excavate the berm and begin planting anew. In particular, I would like to thank or commend and thank Kyle, Aaron, Leah, Jamie, and Steve for their diligence and professionalism. And Scott Jackman for helping us get this on the calendar and seeing it through. It was a pleasure working with all of them. Thank you for your time. And I hope you will be able to personally visit the garden and see the new berm and the other beautiful plantings we have there. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
That was Saturday night.
Did you like it?
Love it, yeah.
Thank you.
It's, I go there all the time. It's wonderful.
Oh, and I should mention that the new berm is in partnership with High Country Conservation. And what we're trying to do there is showcase low-water-use plants so that we can encourage people to plant things that consume less water but are still very beautiful.
Leave you, we get a wonderful email from somebody talking about the Alpine Garden. And leave it, leave your email with somebody and we'll get someone to forward that to you.
Oh, that would be lovely. Thank you.
We just got it a few days ago.
There's somebody that volunteers works with the NRO.
Yeah.
He leaves her every day. Talks about it.
Yeah, we'll forward that to you.
I, I will say that we get so many people going through when we're working there in weeding or planting, and it's a gem. And people just stop and comment about how beautiful it is and ask us questions. And we are there to try to help answer anything that we can. But it, it's just, I hope all of you know where it is and see it. It's, it's really a special place in Breckenridge. Thank you. And may I get those back?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening have a communication to council? Terry, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right, with that, the first hearing's, or public comment is closed. We move on to continued business this evening. Second readings, first is second reading Council Bill Number 26, Series 2022. This is an ordinance amending the building code pertaining to energy efficiency of residential construction and repealing outdated provisions. Mark.
Good evening, council and mayor. This ordinance on second reading will make some changes to our energy efficiency provisions in the code regarding zero-energy-ready homes. We got some feedback from the construction community that we took to heart and created a couple alternative paths to get an approval for new homes that are above code. Be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions? For staff? All right, this is a second reading. Anyone in the public wish to comment on the second reading of Council Bill Number 26? Yes, sir.
Hello.
Hi.
Matt Wright with, I'm from, I live in Frisco, 107 Bob Way in Frisco, Colorado. My company is Deeper Green Consulting. I'm one of the local HERS raiders that has been helping support the, the codes and the zero-energy-ready homes program. Been on the Summit Sustainable Building Code Committee since 2010. First, I'd like to thank Mark and Rick for at least adding the spelling of ZER, Zero-Energy-Ready Homes on, on the documentation and a link to what the program is all about. But, you know, I agree, there is a need for change. The program has not gone well. There, there have been some hiccups, some things that haven't flowed very smooth. You know, it didn't quite fit for every home here in the county. That along with other issues that have happened over the last two years. You know, things did not roll out smoothly, and I agree, there is definitely a need for change. However, I believe the county's process with the multiple pathways was rushed. I'll just leave it at that. You know, some of the, I've looked at a few of these pathways here recently since I've had some time. The PV calculator just more recently being available. It was not available at the time that the county adopted the, the new pathways. But from what I'm seeing, again, I do the energy modeling for a lot of these codes. And the 2021 pathway, it's probably about 10% to 15% worse energy efficiency-wise than Zero-Energy-Ready Homes program. Most of those homes are not meeting the 2018 energy code even. You know, I do see that the 2021 code is, is a great code. And it can be a lot more efficient than the 2018 code. But this is not the whole code that we're adopting. And then to comment on the PV path, too, I just don't think it's going to get used. The calculator is based on Aspen average home use of all homes, new and existing. And the size of PV systems that would have to be installed are going to be way too big to even fit on the homes. A 3,000-square-foot home needs 11 kilowatts of solar. 5,000-square-foot home needs 18 kilowatts. I just was working on a home in Frisco that's a 5,000-square-foot home. And the maximum we could get on there was 10.5. And then also the the HERS scores for these PV pathways, like I mentioned, the 2021, at least how it's written, is about 10% to 15% worse than the zero-energy-ready homes. The PV path is going to put you down into the low teens, which is like 30% more efficient. But that's only because of the solar. They're not really even that much more efficient. That pathway, those homes barely even meet the, just looking at the thermal envelope, those homes barely meet the 2009 code. So I know there's a desire to meet what the county has already done, but I think the process was rushed, rushed. And I would urge you guys to take a little more time to reconsider.
Matt, thank you very much. Anyone else? Oh, thanks, Terry. Anyone else wish to comment on the second reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
A second reading will be passed Council Bill Number 26, Series 2022, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Mark, with all, with, with Matt's comments, are you are we on the right path?
I think, yes, we are on the right path. It's not to say that there might not be some adjustments we need to make down the road if this isn't working, but we've just created two new alternative paths for people to take on this. I think there's also going to be a little leniency for projects that were already in the door, you know, already under design so that, you know, Rick Fout feels comfortable. He can make that administrative determination on a couple of those. I don't think we're satisfying all of Matt's issues that he just brought up, but I think we're going a long ways towards it. And if it does create problems, we can certainly come back and tweak it.
Mark, can you maybe take note of some of those issues that he's raised? And then we could report out on that. And, you know, I don't know how long it would have take to have some of that data, but six months or something like that, year?
Yes, absolutely. I'll get together with Matt and make sure that we know what those are and follow up on those.
Cool. Any more discussion? A roll call, please, Helen.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we have a second reading of Council Bill Number 27, Series 2022. It's an ordinance amending building code pertaining to building permit and inspection fees. Mark.
Mayor and council, this ordinance will adjust our building fees slightly in a few areas. It will essentially make our fees exactly the same as the Summit County building fee schedule. So it'll have consistent fees between jurisdictions. Like we try to have consistent regulations between them regarding building issues.
Thanks, Mark. Questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on the second reading of Council Bill Number 27? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading will be passed Council Bill Number 27, Series 2022, the title which has been read into the record.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? No? A roll call, please.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have Council Bill Number 28, Series 2022. This is an ordinance amending the Accommodation Unit License Regulations to establish mapped areas based on the underlying land use characteristics of the town. And in connection therewith, setting limits on the concentration of licenses by mapped area and establishing files.
I mean, Mayor and council, we have provided some hard copies, and I think the plan here is to also put this bill on the screen rather than first go through the changes that we've made. I'll just kind of describe them in concept, and then we can go line by line. We've made a slight change in the resort property zone provision, allowing for a process for new resort properties that may come online. And that process envisions that there will be, you can, you can just wait, and I will give you the page telling things. And that envisions that if a new potential resort property comes online by meeting the criteria in the code, it would then be deemed a resort property. If deemed a resort property, that property cannot be in any other zone. And that, we thought was important so that someone would not, or an owner applicant would not be able to potentially say, I want to stay in Zone 1, for example, in order to get those sort of licenses. And then it incentivizes the sort of things that we've decided that we find valuable, such as amenities and conference space. In conjunction with that, we have taken out some previous language around definitions in resort property. We have also in the shuttle service provision, in that area of the bill, it is a mandate to have certain criteria. But with respect to shuttle services, we are allowing for that to be administratively determined as a condition to becoming a resort property based on the rules and regulations that the finance department will set forth that should be in line with our values, whether it's proximity or sustainability. And those are, well, there's one other important change. And then I think it's worthwhile to go line by line. And that is to require a review and report out. The first report out period would be February 1, 2023, at which time we may not have a lot of data. But then it would be done annually. And the, the thought there is that we can look at waitlist and attrition. And we had some comments about housing stock and how, you know, how that's being affected. And then the, the staff can come back and make some recommendations to council about whether there need to be changes. And then the, the final thing to just make clear is in the other zones, Zone 1 through 3, those can be changed legislatively. And I think it's really important for the community to understand that while the rationale underlying the Zone 1 through 3 is based on what we see in the land use as far as, you know, the right placement for concentration. This now becomes, it's not a zoning ordinance. It's not this, to change this is not a rezoning issue. It is really now about how the maps are defined and can be changed legislatively by council in Zone 1 through 3, as well as the resort zone. But we have also added the provision for the process for new properties that may at some point be eligible to apply. So maybe we start with the very first change, which we have tried to shade along the way, which is page 8. And it should be down at the bottom. This talks about addition, we have very strict, you know, square footage requirements, but this allows for some determinations to be made based on, you know, amenity space or conference space that it, that would warrant being included in those square footage calculations. And then, yeah, sure.
We didn't strike it, but there was a number three, and that was that site plan provision.
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out. That's right. That subsection C there is where if you are deemed a resort property in the administrative process, then that's the, the zone that you're in. And the map will be amended, which should incentivize resort properties to be in that zone. D is the concept about Zones 1 through 3 having the ability to be modified legislatively. And the rest I've already covered. Yeah, and this is really kind of the heart of it here, that the resort property zone shall be comprised of the number of units available in the resort property zone as of the effective date of this ordinance, and any additional licenses that are granted administratively in the event the finance director makes that determination based on the criteria in the, in the bill already. And this is the provision about the shuttle service. We do anticipate some additional rules and regulations coming online pretty quickly behind here. And then this also has the provision about they have until December 1, 2023 to, to meet the shuttle requirement. So we'll have to kind of square that with, with the rules. Okay, yeah, this was a change. I don't know, Shannon, if you want to talk about this one, or do you want me to, to cover it? This is the, the unrelated issue around transfer of title to a family.
I don't remember.
But that's okay. Oh, you.
Want to do it?
I'm fine with it, yeah. So, so this is just a lot of, I will say, it's unfortunate that Bella cannot be here tonight. She is the one who has to kind of manage and implement this entire thing. But we discovered that this transfer of title to real property could, kind of created a loophole. And so this, this is saying that if you transfer the property to a family member, you're basically gifting it to them. That would be an exception to the, to the non-transferability provision. I'm not sure I did a great job explaining that, but if anyone has questions, let me know. And then there is one more, which would be the reports, probably the last one. Down at the very last provision, keep going down. Thank you, Helen. Yeah, very last page, and that's the report out. And this will give us, hopefully, going forward, we're going to get some better data that we can start to decide whether we need to make changes or tweaks along the way. But we need to give ourselves some time to get that data, which is not going to happen overnight, right? So we're going to need, need to study that for a while. Did I miss anything? Okay.
Thank you. All right, questions for staff? Nope. All right, this is a second reading tonight, so we'll have public hearing. I will call your name. Please come to the lectern. Tell me who you are. And you have three minutes. There's a clock right up there. And say your piece. So name, address, and then tell us, and when you hear the ding, that's, that's three minutes. So Sandy Stedman is first, followed by Abby Brown and Terry Warner, Warren, sorry. Oh, well, Sandy, welcome. Thanks. Thanks for being here. All right, cool, thank you. So it's Abby Brown, Terry Warren, and then Ellen Bergstein. Hi, Abby.
Hey, guys. It's me again. Okay, so my name's Abby Brown. I'm with Woodwinds Property Management. I live over in Wellington neighborhood. I'm a board member for Save VRM, the Summit Alliance Vacation Rental Managers, and was a member of the task force. So a few things that I'm concerned about moving forward with this ordinance. And I did send you a letter today. I apologize if only some of you got it. But some of the areas that we have been in discussion prior are not even being considered now to be moved back in to meet the task force recommendations. So for example, Peak Gate, Upper Warriors Mark, the area right outside Columbine, like Mill Run, Main Street Junction. These were all areas that were actually framed by the task force unanimously to be within the non-residential zone, so either Zones 1 or Zone 2. And my understanding was that they were cut out because of the LUD description, that they didn't meet certain LUD descriptions or even density allotments. It wasn't always clear. But during the work session today, my new concern is, it sounds like you guys can redraw the map. So why is that not happening? And where's that consideration, especially considering it was unanimous decision by that, that task force? So I think there needs to be some more work on getting those maps corrected and adjusted because you're cutting out some major areas. I mean, you've got ski-in-ski-up properties, $2 to $4 million homes sitting on the ski area that are going to go back to be just sitting empty. And I remember 15 years ago, when you would have multiple homes in these areas that would just sit decorated for Christmas year-round, because that's the only time anyone was there. And I don't think we want these areas turning back into ghost towns when they're in those areas and spots where we want to designate tourism, and we want to push that. So I just think the map needs a lot more work. I'm also really concerned to hear that there's not going to be any more consideration on this for several months. I thought this was going to be a constant work in progress. As a task force member, we haven't been approached to come back for anything for, really, since we finished, and I want to say February. You have a group of people that are all stakeholders and all involved that are willing to put their time and energy into this. I, I wish you would use it. If it takes time and effort to adjust something that you need for the map, you have people that are volunteering their time that's outside of staff that can do nothing but help. And then my final piece is just from a practical standpoint. You've got zones. Everything's getting mapped out. Get rid of the hard numbers. Start going to percentages. Because there are going to be fights. There are going to be changes. Just go to percentages. It's going to make life better for everybody now that you have things set in certain spots. And I think it'll just be easier to change moving forward.
Thanks, Abby.
Thanks.
Terry Warren. Oh, yeah, thank you. Alan Bergstein, and then Nina Head.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Alan Bergstein. I own 76 Cucumber Creek Road. I'm also the president of the Cucumber Creek HOA, where we have 15 homes in the development area right across the street from the Nordic Center. I fully support the goals of the STR extra fees as they pertain to helping solve the big problem of affordable housing in this town. But I believe that you're placing an unreasonable burden on the homeowners in Zone 3, particularly around the Nordic Center, and passing the ordinance that would have the opposite impact on what you're really trying to accomplish. My concerns, one that we're, by not allowing homeowners to transfer valid paid licenses upon a sale, you're actually inhibiting the selling price and the pool of buyers and lengthening the selling period. Ultimately, you're going to be reducing your tax revenues and hurting local businesses. We bring, you know, when we rent to families from out of state, we rent short-term. We bring people in, families in, who are spending a lot of money in town and on the mountain. So since you've created a gold rush also to get the licenses. I've talked to a lot of folks in my development who just immediately ran out to get on the licenses. They, right now, don't plan to use them, but they're afraid of the future. So in fact, they're now paying extra fees for something they're not even going to use, but they're just afraid that five years from now, they might have different circumstances. So they don't want to give up those licenses right now. And so another thing, another one of my concerns is that you're, you're treating, I believe you're treating hotels differently. I presume that if a hotel sells their business to some other hotel, they could transfer their licenses in that part of that sale. And it would be understood that it's licensing. So you're treating Zone 3 differently from the other zones. And I know you have your reasons for setting up the different zones. But in fact, by doing that, I believe that you're hurting the homeowners in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Nina? And then Julie Koster and Mark Wheeler.
Let's see there. I want to say before I started that when I have meetings in Omaha, start with the word allegiance.
Oh, I'm sorry. When we have meetings in Omaha, we start with the pledge of allegiance. Just thought I'd mention that. I had a meeting before I got here. It was on Zoom. Hello, Mayor and Tom Council, and thanks for letting us speak again. I'm Nina Head. I'm on 4 o'clock road. I told you that before. I'm going to talk really fast because people didn't steal my thunder this time I spoke, I'm speaking too soon. I'm on 4 o'clock road, been homeowner since 1990, vacation rental, that short-term, remember. I love Breckenridge, love my resort community. I embrace the tourists. I talk to them all the time about you, all kinds of things. I told you that last time. I'm speaking about the zoning, which I feel is unconstitutional, unlawful to tell owners they can't do things with their property. And as an example, Tyra 2, which is up the same ski slope that I live on, called 4 o'clock, is Zone 3. Same people ski down, they ski past me, and I tell them where to go. Nicely. I mean nicely where to go, where to go to eat and all that stuff. And up, up on Tyra right now, there's a really cool bicycle place, and then it will be a ski place. My kids are now bicycling on that. I assume it's ski jumps after later. And a lot of people have been renting their property for decades, and now they can't because they're Zone 3. And I want to say that we, the town of Breckenridge, are now going by land use management's LUDs. And it's been drawn to my attention that management companies have given you names, addresses of rental addresses of rental properties and that are where they are. And you have three zones for 30 or more LUDs. Some are like 30.1, 18.1, 18.2. And you can draw little pockets in those. And you don't do that anymore, just because, like what we tell our kids, just because I said so. But just because isn't what you say to your town people, I don't think. And there's been articles in the paper that say, we don't want to be like Breck, but you should be the leaders for Summit County. You could be amazing leaders. So I'm thinking that maybe you could pick two county management people and have them redirect this, and have them pull out those pockets for you, because they've given you those pockets in Warriors Mark and Tyra Two that are ski places. Let them do it before Thanksgiving. Be the leaders for Summit County, that everybody look at you for leaders that you are. That's what I'm thinking.
Thanks, Nina. All right, Julie.
Hey, hey. Julie Koster with the Summit Alliance of Vacation Rental Managers. I live in Frisco, but I work out of Breck. I wanted to come to you guys tonight, first of all, to say thank you. I know this has been a really challenging process, and we've been going back and forth for a while. But this thing that I wrote, I'm going to scrap, and I'm going to kind of go off book a little bit. Just recently, a couple of weeks ago, Save VRM had the pleasure of being given a grant by the Vacation Rental Management Association of America, VRMA. And that grant was only awarded to five different agencies or organizations like ours throughout the entire country. And there are a lot of us that do what I do. So we were super proud to receive that grant. Why did we get it? We got it because I wrote this crazy grant request, looking for money to support our public affairs effort and our government strategy, working with you guys. So what we're doing with that money is using it to support things like me showing up here and talking to you guys and advocating for the vacation rental industry. So I want to start by saying thank you for saying vacation rentals, because I've heard you guys saying that. So thank you for correcting yourselves and catching yourselves mid-sentence. I know Mary really appreciates that. So thank you for doing that. But the other thing I wanted to talk about was some of the reverberating impacts that the things are going to have here in Breck, throughout the entire industry, that maybe you don't realize. And it's why VRMA chose Save VRM as sort of one of their, you know, dog and pony show, sort of to put us up on a pedestal and say, here's what's happening in Summit County. The rest of the country should pay attention. And next week, if you weren't aware, VRMA is hosting an event right here in Breck at Beaver Run. So people from all around the country are going to be coming to talk and listen to us and hear more about what we're doing here in Breckenridge. So what's happening tonight doesn't just affect what happens in Breckenridge. And I'm sure you guys have thought about this. I know you guys talk to other council members around the country. But what's happening here tonight could have effects in Tahoe. It could have effects in Palm Springs. It could change the way people do it in Frisco. It could change the way we're doing everything in this industry. And it's really, really important to keep that in mind. 15 years ago, right about now, I was sitting in a room in Harris Lake Tahoe as the marketing director for the Ski Lake Tahoe Marketing Committee. And at that Ski Lake Tahoe meeting, we had about 150 people in the room who represented the ski industry, the hotel industry, the casinos, vacation rentals. Back then, we called them VHRs. We had all different people in that room. And this woman came in, and she spoke to us about destination marketing. And what she said to this room of 150 people who lived in South Lake Tahoe and were incredibly proud of Tahoe, was be like Breckenridge. And most of us in the room had never even been to Breckenridge. And here I am living here now. So this goes back a long ways, and it's going to keep going in the future. So I hope you'll keep that in mind as you move forward and look at some of these different recommendations. Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you. Mark Wheeler.
Good evening. My name is Mark Wheeler, representing Woods Manor as a property owner. First, I want to thank Peyton Rogers and Sarah Crump for their quick and professional responses to my inquiries with regard to the mapping and zoning questions related to Woods Manor. I'm attending this evening to express my concern and advocate for Woods Manor on broken lands to be placed as Zone One versus currently proposed Zone Three. Two points I'd like to make. One is, is that it's my understanding that the Tourism Overlay Task Force had originally included Woods Manor as Zone One, and that the town council took the task force recommendation and adjusted the zone boundaries more closely aligned with the LUD boundaries. As you may know, Woods Manor sits on approximately four acres of land. And I'm wondering if any portion of Woods Manor property resides within officially defined LUD boundaries associated with Zone One. Number two, is that Woods Manor meets the criteria for Zone One properties. It was constructed for short-term rentals, is originally offered as a timeshare, and just this past year, 100% has been converted to ownership. In addition, the property has a clubhouse, 24-hour security, onsite property management, has units designated to lockers, ski lockers, underground parking, and is within walking distance to downtown. I'd like the task force in the council tonight to consider, reconsider placing Woods Manor back into Zone One. So I thank you for listening to my concerns, my rationale, and to the requests.
Mark, thank you very much. Tim Painter, and then Dan Corwin. Good evening. Welcome back.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Tim Painter. I live across the street at River Mountain Lodge. My objective is eventually to sell and buy a house where my grandchild can join me. I'm really concerned. We're now going to allow other projects to join the resort classification, but we have a hard cap. We're not allowing for any growth whatsoever. And I noticed a hard cap increased, which I haven't been to all the work sessions, but I don't know why. After you guys fought for hard caps, all of a sudden, we got 130 more hard caps in the resort zone. I would encourage you to do 100%. That, that's a number that's really easy to figure out. 100% if you're in a resort zone. If you're a tourist, come here, stay here. Don't go to the resident, to residential areas east of Main Street, but come here. But when you have a hard cap, that makes it really difficult. Also, regarding shuttle services, I'll make it quick. I've been here for 20 years, living here. I came here by the four-wheel-drive routes 40 years ago. But 20 years ago, I came here, and we had a shuttle service, but nobody used it. And so why are we requiring at least nine more shuttle buses to be on the road in rush hour, when no one uses them? And the reason they don't use them is our bus service is so good. And also, I'd like to make this point, there is no better way for a second property owner to know what the problems are for short-term rentals, for employer housing, than to sit on a bus. What a great opportunity to meet the people that we're all talking about. So I don't see the bus service as really being used as an expense for the homeowners, and I would ask you to get rid of that. Finally, in my last 55 seconds, I own a studio loft. It's not a studio. It's not a one-bedroom. It's bigger than a one-bedroom. But your regulations only allow me to have four people, and that's really problematic when I'm classified as a smaller unit than a one-bedroom. You'd rather have six people in a one-bedroom and four people in my studio loft with two bathrooms. It doesn't make sense. So I would ask you to fix that. Finally, in my last 26 seconds, thanks. I know this has been gut-wrenching. I encourage you to table this tonight and go back to the drawing board. Steamboat Springs had a great idea. Let's tax the hell out of them. But maybe this isn't the entire solution. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Tim. Dan Corwin.
Evening, Dan. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Corwin. I live at 3415 Corkscrew Drive in the Corkscrew. Have been here for 44 years on my own real estate company, and feel we are all so lucky to live in such a fantastic place. I have not been to these meetings in person, because the mayor and town council know I support and agree with what they have been doing regarding STRs. There are many other people in the community who feel the same way and don't see the need to come to these meetings in person, since we don't have anything to object to. We are a silent majority who want to see these new regulations and ordinances put in place. Just because we're not the loudest voice in the room does not mean we don't exist. All you need to do is look at the fact that the most recent election for three open town council seats went to people that supported managing short-term rentals, support trying to not lose any more residences that has historically been workforce housing, and support keeping residential neighborhoods from being overrun by STRs. These candidates in favor of these regulations won by a landslide. As I mentioned, I am a Realtor, and it's important for people to know that not all Realtors support the Summit Realtors, known as SAR, in their fight against these regulations. There are many of us Realtors who don't agree with SAR being in opposition to these new regulations and ordinances. The Summit Alliance of Vacation Rental Managers, SAVRUM, I guess, and SAR have sent out a petition with the title, "Don't wreck Breck." Not only is this a misnomer, but it is totally opposite to what these regulations and ordinances are trying to do, which is to preserve this wonderful place we have. SAVRUM and SAR have also made other claims that don't make sense. We're not going to lose 8,000 jobs. The cul-de-sacs will not be void of laughter of children playing in the snow, nor will there be streets darkened by mega-rich homeowners only using these homes for a few weeks a year. SAVRUM and SAR are portraying a doomsday scenario when, in reality, nothing will be any different than what it is today. Going forward, there'll be some reduction in licenses, mainly in Zone Three, but that will just take us back to what it was a few years ago before the pandemic. They are not taking away any current licenses. I do feel there are tweaks that need to be made, and it's evident that the mayor and council are listening to concerns and making changes. They will continue to do so in the future. Please support what our mayor and town council are trying to do, provide constructive criticism to them on modifications that may need to be made. And let's keep Breckenridge the town we all want to live in, work in, and a great place to visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. David Wilcox, followed by Dan Cleary.
Let's get set up first. Mayor and council, good evening. David Wilcox, representing Summit Mountain Rentals, and tonight, a homeowner from the White Wolf Properties. Thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns on this important issue. I'm a homeowner in White Wolf in Proposed Zone Three. Having reviewed the proposals, I do not believe they would serve the best interests of the Breckenridge economically or in terms of the community itself. I respectfully ask the committee to consider my rationale below and vote against the current proposals. I believe a more nuanced approach than zones based on not homogenized LUDs would achieve a more appropriate balance between the diverse accommodation preferences of vacationers and the housing needs of those serving the Breckenridge community, including visitors. My rationale for opposing the current proposals is based on the following. Firstly, the proposals don't take into account the likely substantial negative economic impact on the Breckenridge economy, which is anchored on tourism. Visitor numbers to Breckenridge grow each year, leading to increased revenue and tax intake for both the town and Summit County, facilitated by the further development of Peak Six, Seven, and Eight, and the development of Breckenridge as a year-round vacation destination. Currently, there is many different types of accommodation for overnight visitors, hotels, condos, townhouses, and houses in both higher and lower density areas. With the proposed caps, the following two economic impacts are likely. One, first, the potential reduction in stock of overnight accommodation of between 9% and 20% will lead to higher prices for such accommodation and potentially choke off demand for overnight stays in favor of day visit or overnight stays in other parts of the Rockies or other resort towns. Second, the reduction in diversity of overnight accommodation will likely lead to less diversity in types of visitors, families, and in the balance of economic activity, a focus which goes beyond skiing, hiking, day trips. This is likely to result in some types of visitors looking elsewhere away from Breckenridge, because many visitors appreciate staying in a home away from home in a quiet community. Visitors appreciate staying close to where they want to vacation. Nordic skiers are those wanting to ski on Peak Eight, Seven, and Six. White Wolf and other communities along Ski Hill Road towards Peak Eight are very convenient for this group. Three, multi-generational groups of families often include those who do not want to ski, board, hike, and appreciate what Breckenridge has to offer in terms of shops, cafe, and wellbeing activities. Secondly, the proposals seem inconsistent with some values in the Breckenridge Vision Plan, specifically the impact of the likely reduction in diversity of the overnight guest accommodation. This appears inconsistent with the town's ability to provide a diversity of housing, which is integrated throughout the community and provides a variety of housing options. An impact of the likely increase in day visitors. Breckenridge Vision Plan highlights community members' strong negative reactions. I was, thank you, Mary Betley, White Wolf 962. Thank you.
Dave, thank you.
Sure.
Always nice to see you.
You as well.
Dan Cleary. And then we'll have Jan Radosovich and Matt Ray.
My name is Dan Cleary. I live in Blue River, and I've got a condo at Valdezare on 301 North French Street. I want to thank the council and staff for going through this process, and also for allowing us this opportunity to speak. I wanted to echo Dan Corwin's comment. I hadn't heard that consideration before, but I would agree that a lot of us have not come to these meetings and been involved in this process, because generally, we agree with what this council's doing. I do support the efforts of staff and council in limiting short-term rentals in these caps in the residential zone. I generally support the zone overlay, although I would say that it's odd how some of it's broken up, but I wasn't involved in the discussions on how that took place. So I certainly can't comment how that was accomplished. I do understand that it's a legislative process to modify that zone overlay, so that it seems like that there's opportunity there to make changes as needed. As this is an ever-evolving process, I just wanted to plant a seed for the council and staff to consider for future. I'd ask council to consider how the town could incentivize local property owners, who are and have historically been long-term renters. I want to point out that the Lease to Locals program, it only benefits those who have been previously short-term renting. There's, there's an inequity there that seems just unfair to those who've been doing all along what it appears this council wants them to do. I understand we can't have tax incentives, but there are other ways to do it. I've heard some discussion in the community where, you know, this 10% cap may be over, an overburden. And, you know, it comes to mind that if someone wanted to change, someone who was long-term renting and wanted to decide to short-term rent, could the council consider a preference point system or some sort of incentive where it says, okay, if you've been renting for three to five years, long-term, you move to the head of the line, or you move to top 10 of the line? You know, I, there's numerous ideas, and I'd leave that to staff and council to consider. But I would just ask that in that residential overlay zone, you know, someone who's been doing something, and I'll use myself as an example. I've been long-term renting for 18 years. I did pull a short-term license out of a reaction of concern, because my needs may change. I don't want to pay those fees, and I also don't want to take up a space where Breckenridge really wants to have those visitors come into their, into their town. But when you tie our hands, you force that maneuver. And so I'd ask this council to consider the option to allow some sort of incentive. Thanks, y'all. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. I know you weren't prepared to talk tonight. Great job. Thank you. Jan. Dan.
Hello, council. Jan Radosovich, 213 and a half South Ridge Street Alley. I ran out of time on the last hearing. And so I'm continuing my point, and I read through all the comments that you, the councils, received, and, you know, the 300 pages in the past. And I read through all the comments that you, the councils received and you know, the three hundred pages in the package. And nobody has addressed the issue. And two people tonight have said how they've pulled permits just in case. The permits have value. People have to pull a permit because they have value in the future. When you pass the existing ordinance, I was number one on the waiting list. Now my property is in zone three, which I disagree with, but that's where we are right now. So I've gone as number one on the waiting list. For a short term permit from four hundred and forty-eight units from the two hundred and twenty-two hundred cap. To being in zone three. Where it's going to be limited to three ninety and from the existing permits, I have eight hundred and thirty-three. Permits as number one holder. The town says we don't pick winners and losers. Permits have value. You've heard that tonight. At one of the meetings, Rick Coleman said, I think it was a work session. That the residential zone would be lucky to see their first permit in twenty years. I'm a real estate professional. I agree with that. There won't be a permit in the real estate zone for twenty years. I also Googled today, the average life of a woman is eighty-one point one years. In twenty years, I most likely won't be around. I'm hopefully I will, but I will. Give my unit to my daughter or before I die or give it to her upon my death. You have exemptions in the rules for passing the short term permits. To people who you've got exemptions for those things. I think it's only fair so that if I'm, I've gone from number one to eight hundred and thirty-three. If I'm not around when my number comes up, that my daughter has to go to the end of the line. So I think the short term exemptions for. The permits should apply to the waitlist. I'm running out of my thirty minutes. The other two things I want to say is, I like Dan Corwin, have lived here for forty-four years. I'm also a realtor. I totally support what SAR is doing. I don't want to speak. I'm in RE/MAX. I don't want to speak for my other agents, but nobody in the RE/MAX office has been in favor of this. The other thing with an ordinance is. It should be a good ordinance and I see this ordinance being changed already. I see it being built in for change. I mean, it just seems like you're going too fast.
Jan, thank you.
This is off this topic. I wasn't here for, when you adopted the minutes. But when I read your minutes from last time, it said I was talking about ordinance, I mean land use district forty. And ten, I was talking about forty-one Timber Trail. Thank you.
You get that Helen? Uh, Kim Stevenson and then Kelly Hepburn.
Hello, I'm Kim Stevenson. I live in Summit County. First of all, a couple town council members commented a couple weeks ago. At the town council meeting that they didn't think that the town council restrictions. On vacation rental licenses have affected property values. Based on being a Breckenridge and Summit County real estate broker myself for over forty years. In my professional opinion. Your vacation rental restrictions have absolutely caused property values to decline. And they will continue to decline for those sellers whose buyers are not able to obtain vacation rental licenses. You have dramatically reduced the buyer pool with your restrictions. And have affected the saleability of the Breckenridge properties. Secondly, your requirement for the resort zone properties to have their own shuttle services. When there is a severe shuttle and bus drivers shortage. Not only in Breckenridge and Summit County, but also across Colorado. And a crisis in the lack of affordable Summit County housing. It therefore seems that your shuttle requirements are unachievable. In addition, where are these renters being shuttled to? Perhaps the restaurants, shops, and city market should also contribute to the town council. Shuttle requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Kelly Hepburn.
Kelly Hepburn, I live in unincorporated Summit County, so I'm just here to speak on behalf of. Other homeowners, other people in town. I've had a lot of conversations with people about this. I am also on the president of my HOA and have had many discussions about short term rentals in our community. I am the only person that owns that lives there full time. And having restrictions on our community is another fight that I will continue to converse about. But I've served on many volunteer committees. I own here. I've been here for ten years. I've. Probably grilled some of you at different, you know, public events to elect town officials. So you're welcome. In nineteen sixty, our population was three hundred and ninety-three. As of the twenty twenty census, we are now at just over five thousand. So we've had to evolve a lot. We've had to move. As more tourists have come in, I used to work for Breckenridge Grand Vacations in the marketing department. And alongside the BTO, we were marketing off season times to get people to come up here and we must have done a really good job. Our population and our tourism has increased and now we are trying to pump the brakes. So, you know, even to accommodate those tourists, we've built parking lots as well. And we are still building more short term, or sorry, long term rentals for our community. You've heard from homeowners, employees, citizens opposing this ordinance for personal reasons, financial reasons. I just don't think it's ready yet. I spoke last week how in order for a local to purchase one of town's cheapest units at a mere six hundred K. They would need at least a hundred thousand dollars in annual income. That unit is still sitting and it's over eighty days now. Locals are not chomping at the bit to scoop up that deal. Locals aren't buying million dollar homes. These restrictions are putting negatively, negative impacts on properties that are. Simply unattainable for locals. It does more harm than good. Families travel different. I made a point and if you saw my rant on a summit daily thread. They want to rent homes. They don't want to cram their five person family in two double beds at the La Quinta. They want homes. They want a yard. They want a large kitchen to share a meal at. So these homes and neighborhoods, yes, they're infringing on some neighborhood use. But a lot of our neighborhoods still sit empty. Shock Hill, those are large homes on the ski resort side. I just think that they should have more use. I'm here to urge you to take more time before passing this without a shadow of a doubt. That it will benefit the town of Breckenridge and its citizens and their property values. Let's work on the maps a little more, utilize the task force, study more data, see our economy shifts before putting this into place. To save more local neighborhoods, put a hundred percent restrictions on Wellington, Vista Point, Valley Brook. And encourage long term rentals in larger homes to approve A D U for short term rentals.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, that's all the names I have. All right, with that, the hearing is closed. Pre-motion discussion. All right, let's have a motion and then we can have a discussion afterwards if you'd like.
Okay, and we pass Council Bill number twenty-eight, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been in form that's been handed out.
There's a motion and a second. Further discussion and comments. Would like to go first, Jeffrey?
You know, I would just like to say. None of us take this lightly. This has been a long ongoing process. I know it's not perfect. And I feel the angst. This has been the nicest public comment that I've gone through here. So thank you for that. And I would just say this, this will be fluid. I know it's not perfect. I think we can tweak it. Down the road, there's been some particular properties mentioned. We can look at that. But just, I mean, some stats, we have the second highest S T R per capita in America. When I first got on the council, we were, we were in a crisis mode because we had forty-seven percent. Of our workers could live between Farmer's Corner and Hoosier Pass or the base of Hoosier. Forty-seven percent, we didn't think was enough. Now we have twenty-six, fifty-eight, twenty-six percent, fifty-eight percent of our homes. Have a, have a short term license. Yes, this is not going to solve everything. Certainly, no one's going to go out and, and you know. Local probably won't be able to buy a home in a White Wolf right away. You know, I think that's unrealistic, but I think it will change the complexion of the community. To a degree that if we see it's, if we see it's degradating, we can, we can mess with it. I do think this, you know, some folks ask what we should do is wait a while. I don't know if we can wait a while. I think we need to eliminate the uncertainty. And, excuse me, and, and, and get back to doing business. Now, Kim, I don't know if she, Kim was referring to me. When she said that a council person said, this is not going to affect the property values. What I said is it's not going to decimate the property values and I don't think it will. I think Breckenridge is a product that people. Will want to come to, want to purchase homes and after things shake out, I don't think it'll decimate it. Do I think it might affect it in the short term? Yes, possibly it will, but I also think that it'll probably be for the good of the community. We're forty-two percent occupancy year round. So I don't think people are going to not be able to get a place here. Because there's not going to be a lot of room because of what this legislation has done. Also, if you have a license, you can continue to have a license. What this will do was if you sell it, that yes, that could be an issue. But some of the folks that were talking about it that have written us letters, say, oh, you know, I've owned a home here for forty years, thirty years. Well, that appreciation, you know, I think, I hope will defray any sort of sting you'll take, you'll take out. If, if your property might not be able to get a license. And I'll, I'll close with this. I like all you people, those of you that I know. This is not punitive at all. It is what I think is the best for the community at this moment. I think we're in a triage situation. We don't have enough workers to service the guests and it's diminishing the Breckenridge product.
Yeah, I'll start by speaking to the changes with that. Thank you to staff and Bella who's done a tremendous amount of work. I think that did make the ordinance stronger. A couple people spoke to the shuttle service and I think largely that's addressed in this new ordinance. We're in situations where the shuttle is unnecessary due to location, due to discretion of the finance director. Advance our sustainability goals. Yes, that doesn't always need to be a requirement. So I'm glad we fixed that. On. The change with the resort zone being administrative process. Again, I think that was a great observation so that resorts can't cannibalize any zone one properties. I think that was. A great thing. And finally, I think most important is the annual review process that on an annual basis. We will look at the data, we will look at the impacts and we will adjust accordingly. And part of that process is maybe we bring in another. Round of the task force to also look at the data and continue this conversation we've had with industry, with community members. So. I'm very happy that part was included. And it makes it a stronger ordinance. Again, the cap has been passed. We're not discussing the cap. This is the next step and I think this next step does make it a stronger ordinance for our community for advancing our goals. The impact to tourism, this. These zones do not impact. Towards them in the way that zone one will open up immediately. There'll be movement immediately. And I think the market needs that. Otherwise, a couple other things, someone brought up lease to locals, that'll be another conversation, but I think that was a very valid concern. That was brought up there and also on the waitlist management. I'm wondering if that is an administrative procedure, but. Have it mimic the exceptions within the license transfer, I think would be something. For staff to explore. So on second reading, I do support this ordinance.
Jay?
Thanks, Eric. I did want, I wanted to thank staff, Kirsten, the planning department, community development, Bella, the task force. We have tasked you guys with such a huge monumental and I think someone said today, you know. A role model for others to follow and I think our staff has really done an amazing job. Putting these things together and addressing the issues that have been brought up. We are adhering to the free market principle in the resort and zone one districts. And that is such to have that liquidity, to have licenses available for all, or at least the vast majority of units that exist. Is such a win for this community and such a win for the, you know, the second homeowner who. You know, we've listened to, for the local, the resident that owns investment properties. To new investors that having those zones have fluidity, to have transparency and clarity. Is a huge win for this process. The fact that we have a process in place to look at this each year. And look at the reports and look at the numbers and to have the legislative review. That Abby asked for, to look at P Gate, to look at Opera Warriors Market a year from now. And see what the effects are. I think that provides flex in this ordinance to be able to adjust to market conditions. And I just, you know, we talked about how everyone who has a, has a rental license. Can continue to rent that, you know, satisfied Nina's fears. If you have it, we're not taking anything away. You're allowed to use it. It was brought up about Woods Manor and this was investigated by staff. We looked at it, staff looked at it. And it was determined that at this moment, it did not fit into one of the land districts that were zone one. Will this have, will this be timed with an economic downturn? You know, I, I think you can't, you can't put that forth. This is a decrease in units, as we said, as I take such a long time. We may go through three economic cycles before we see how the decrease in number of licenses are really affected. And the assertion that this is too much, too fast. I really believe in all of the discussions I've had and all of the sit downs, the coffees, the lunches. With people that disagree with us in, in one way or another. The common theme was get something passed so that we can continue business. We need certainty in this market and. It's time that this council gets on to new business as well. There's a lot of exciting things ahead of us and. I think that it's time to allow the real estate community to go back to doing their job and selling property. And, you know, the shuttle mandate Carol's. Touched on and I still remain in such support of this ordinance.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. Looking to the future, I'm excited about zone one opening up. I think that's a progression there. And certainly from my lens, absolutely where we want to have our visitors focused, you know. That whole zone to me is ski in, ski out. It's dinner in, dinner out. So I think that's good and I'm excited about that. You know, I think we need to be mindful of the ratio of our overnight out of state guests that we've got. I love that in the BTO report today that we saw that sixty, sixty-three percent of our visitors were in that category, which is, is awesome. I think looking into the future, we've got to be thoughtful about, you know, that whole area up. By the mid station, the Gondola, you know, lug ten, lug thirty point five. And make sure we retain our competitive advantage with those out of state, out of town overnight guests. They are, they're, they're super important to, to the brand and to the success of the businesses in our community. So yeah, looking to the future, I want to be mindful of how we're doing there. Deshawn, thanks for your time earlier this week. Appreciate you taking some time to chat with me. I agree with you completely about us having some data to measure our success and I think that's one of the tasks we've got going forward here is to get some good. Good marks out there so that we're all. so that we're all talking the same language and working towards the same goals and sitting down to define those goals together. One of the things to me that's super important, Jeffrey talked on a little bit, is how many, how many workers do we have living in the basin? And we've got to get much higher than that 26% that we're at now. And, you know, certainly the housing committee here is working hard on that. A lot of folks are, you know, we're hoping to put 1,000 units. Put employees in 1,000 units in the next five years, and I think that'll get that 26% a lot higher, which I think will kind of help equalize some of that, that ratio that we've been struggling with, you know, with tourists and workers to make sure they've got an amazing experience here in town. So yeah, I am in support of making a decision and moving forward and then making it better. So, thank you.
Yeah, this has been a long haul, as Jeffrey said. I, you know, I think this really, it probably started as an organized discussion around the destination management plan development. And, you know, that was what, five, six years ago? Council's been working on it in earnest for over two years. There has been a lot of thought that has gone into this. There's been just an incredible number of discussions. All of us have had one-on-one with many of you in group settings and coffees and in the committee. It's not perfect, and we have set up a mechanism for, for reporting data and taking a look at it and having an opportunity to tweak it on an annual basis. But we need to let it work for a while. We need to bring some certainty to the market for a bit. We need to remember, you know, we passed the cap at 2,200 last fall. And there's been no movement of licenses since then, and there's a lot of people in the community that want us to move to the next step. Thanks to Abby for helping us with the overlay zoning in the districts initially. She put a tremendous amount of work in, in the overlay committee. And, and that really got that discussion going. We really did use the majority of the recommendations of the committee. We didn't use them all, but we used many of them. And, and conceptually, that came out of that committee. Because as you remember, our original ordinance was everyone grouped into one 2,200 bucket, which would have capped units, you know, capped all additional licenses for quite some time. And so I think we made some improvements. There's been a lot of compromise. We're not quite there. Staff's put a tremendous amount of work in. I'm very grateful for their work. And seems like every time they bring us data and bring us the information we ask, we ask for more. And I really appreciate that. They've worked really hard. I'm in support of this. I look forward to looking at it again February 1st and looking at the data and determining whether that's really valid enough data to make changes at that time or waited, wait till the following February. But, you know, this thing will evolve, and I think we're all committed to that. I also appreciate the positive nature of everyone's comments tonight. They were very constructive, and I really appreciate it. I'm meeting with someone tomorrow for coffee to talk about it some more. So the conversations began, they're continuing. So I think we're all wide open to keep talking. But, you know, it's time to get something done, bring some certainty, and move on. So, thanks to everyone.
Kelly?
Yes, thank you to everyone for sure. I won't go into as much depth. I agree with most of what's been said. I, I just wanted to revisit the numbers because I feel like sometimes that's getting lost in the discussion. And, you know, the existing STR today are 4,336, and under the cap, it's 4,016. That's a reduction from 50%, 56% of the units in Breckenridge having a short-term rental license to 52% of the units in Breckenridge having a short-term rental license. So I just, I feel like there's a lot of conversation about how enormous the change is. And Abby provided us with, you know, good information about like, but we've got to watch, you know, how, what types of units are for rent. And, you know, we want to be able to protect the brand of Breckenridge by allowing people to come here and visit and stay in the type of unit they want to stay in. We agree. We totally agree. And we have that data Bella has provided to us, you know, how many single-family homes have a license versus how many one-bedroom, two-bedroom studio? We have that data, and that will definitely be a part of our look back each year as we are moving forward to understand, you know, are we still providing the types of places that our people want, our visitors want to come and stay? So I really, I, you know, am very glad that we've put this ordinance in place. I think it's the right thing for our community. And, and I just don't want people to get, you know, so kind of wrapped up in things that we don't continue to look at the data and understand that it's not as enormous of a change as, as sometimes it feels.
Well said, Kelly. First of all, let me thank the staff. I know that a couple of you already have. But let me also thank all of you out there for showing up, especially the ones that have been here for every meeting, Abby, Julie, I know Tim's been here a bunch of times too. So thank you all for being part of the process. I think that's obviously very important. Thanks to everybody that has stopped me on the street or I've, you know, had coffee with. And, and thank you for the council, to the council for all the hard work. I know it's been difficult. I mean, it hasn't been fun. This has been, honestly, I'd rather go back to the pandemic and deal with, we were dealing with then rather than go through this if I had my choice. So I think there's a couple of things that I, I don't want to repeat what's been said, but there's a couple of things I think are very important. Number one, I was happy with the 2,200 cap, and that was it. I think I, that's where I wanted to be. But I think that the community made some really good arguments about moving to this overlay district comment concept so that there were things for sale right away. Make no mistake, we're at 4,400 licenses right now. We will be higher than that before we start to go the other way. There are 200, well, 200, there's three, almost 300 licenses that will be available in Zone One in 35 days. That, that is how this is structured. So originally, it was 2,200 unless somebody anywhere in town sold, there was no other licenses. Because we're doing this by zone, Zone One automatically has 300 licenses that are, that can go to properties immediately in 35 days. Zone Two will need to lose a few, but only 12 in order for Zone Two to become active in the market again. And then Zone Three, that we call the neighborhood, is a little bit different. I think that's sort of the part that I didn't, you know, do I, is that what I wanted? Not really. I didn't, I didn't want to increase licenses. I mean, we could have, you know, we can have 4,700 licenses before we start to see any decrease. But in the, in the spirit of where this path has gone, that's where we are, and I am supportive of where we are today. There is an opportunity for some changes. We, you know, we've been batting around all kinds of different things. I, Todd and I went up to Upper Warriors Mark today to look at the ski in, ski out. Lenny, we tromped around your neighborhood. We then ended up over at, over at Woods Manor. I know that's, Mark, I know that Stu's talking about seeing if some kind of survey will show that you guys are actually in the other zone. So, you know, there, there are, there are changes that will go forward. Would I have liked to make this thing perfect? Yeah, that would have been great. We could have talked about this for a solid couple more years to get everything done that we wanted. But the whole point, and I think SAR sort of led the charge on, you got, you got to get something done so we can start having some properties for sale. That's why this isn't perfect. I mean, I could hammer away at this constantly now for a while and get it perfect. But nothing sells it, that 2,200 cap that we live at today. So I think it's important to do it the way we're doing. Tim, just so you know, the resorts are at 100% the way this is currently written. It, it doesn't have the number 100%, but it's a license for every unit, so it actually is 100%. And with the new change to the shuttle ordinance, we agree with some of the things that the village and yourself have brought up. Now it'll be administrative review that whoever your HOA president is, will come in and talk to the finance director and prove why you don't need a shuttle, and then there'll be some more rules around that. So I think we, I think we agree with some of the comments on the shuttle piece. We agreed with some of the comments on the resort piece. No one loses a license. I think, you know, that's, that's the big thing. In the end, a lot of this is just about resale, and I get it. I get where the heartburn is. The last thing I want to say, we, there's been a couple of letters over time that have suggested that the council's making money because we own property in some of these zones. I'm not going to speak for anybody else, even though I know that nobody is. But I own a home in Zone Three that I don't have an SDR license on. I own property on Main Street. I have an 1,800 square foot penthouse apart on Main Street that I could rent, that I don't. I rent to a local couple for $2,300 a month. I also have an 1,800 three-bedroom in the same building that I rent for $1,800 a month. Neither of those have short-term rental licenses, and I don't plan on getting short-term rental licenses. So to assume that the council has done this for personal gain, I won't lie, it pisses me off because this, none of this is for personal gain. This is really, we do this because we believe in this community. We love this community, and that's why we do it. You don't have to agree with us, but that's why this is done. At no point are any of us making more than our stipend that the town pays us to sit up here. So I just, I thought it was important that I stand up for the council and just explain that. So with that, thanks again, everyone for being here. I will close the discussion and ask for a roll call, please, Helen.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. All right, thank you. We also have Council Bill number 29, series 2022. This is an ordinance reorganizing Title IV, Chapter One, repealing regulations of accommodation units and replacing those provisions in a companion bill entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Accommodation Unit License Regulations to Establish Mapped Areas Based on the Underlying Land Use, Characteristics of the Town, and in connection therewith, Setting Limits on the Concentration of Licenses by Mapped Area and Establishing Fines."
Mayor Council, this is just the companion bill that kind of conforms the, sorry, conforms the the bolt license, which is a requirement for STR licensing with the, I'm sorry, the vacation rental licensing. So if there are any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? This is the companion bill to what we just passed. Nope, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, we move past Council Bill number 29, series 2022, the title which has been read into the record.
Second?
There is a motion. And a second, any further discussion by council? No, roll call, please.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. We have a first council, first reading Council Bill number 30. This is an ordinance, Council Bill number 30, series 2022. This is an ordinance, Town Council, Town of Breckenridge, Colorado, acting by and through its Utility Enterprise Fund, proving a loan from the Colorado Water Conservation Board, authorizing the form and execution of the loan contract, promissory note to evidence such loan, and security agreement in connection therewith, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents related thereto, and prescribing other details in connection therewith. James?
Hello, Mayor and Town Council. This ordinance will approve loan acceptance with, between the Colorado Water Conservation Board and the Town of Breckenridge and the terms of that loan. This was presented today at the work session, and just to restate it once again, this, the loan proceeds from this will be used for the Goose Pasture Tarn Dam Project. And this was always part of the funding plan of this project to secure this loan as part of the funding.
Thank you, James. Any questions for James? Yep, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading?
My first reading, we pass Council Bill number 30, series 2022, the title which has been read into the record.
Question in a second. Any further discussion on this first reading? Roll call.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes, we have no resolutions this evening. Do we have to do anything with the short-term rental bedroom count de novo hearing written decision?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that. So I circulated a draft decision since the verbal decision that was made is right in line with the written decision. I don't think there's much for you to do. It's more of a procedural step in the process. So we will, if it's consensus or approved by you, we will then get it on to Mr. Now as the final decision.
Do we need voice vote or?
A voice vote is fine, yeah.
Right. All in favor of the short-term rental bedroom count de novo hearing written decision? Was, right, the ayes have, the yays have in. Any other thing to report from the town manager and staff, Rick? We handled this in the afternoon meeting. Anything else from council? Any other, other matters? All right, I got one little thing. So there's the new trail that goes from the top of Betty's up to the top of Gold Run. According to Jeffrey, is also going to be Chantilly, which that, we have three Chantillys now, which I think might be a little too much. I'm not saying that this is the name, but in the location of that area where the three Chantillys come together, in the woods, there, there is a heart and a star, and there used to be a half moon also made out of rocks that somebody did long enough ago that I first saw them probably in the mid 80s, and they were covered with weeds then. Well, they're super covered with weeds now, but they're really cool. I don't know if they're on private property or not. But I don't know if there's a way in the name of the trail we can, I don't know, memorialize the, the heart and the moon and the stars. We used to always, you know, that used to be such a huge grind when I was in my twenties to climb Gold Run on my, you know, 75-pound bike. You would always go in the woods then and check those out because they were pretty cool. So anyway, that's just, next time you're up there, have a look. Walk into the woods on the left as you're going up.
You could call the trail celestial.
Oh, I like that. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.